Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wayne Regular City Council Meeting of June 18th, 2024. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask everybody, please silence your phones, and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Racy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brock?
Here.
Councilman Dowd?
Here.
Councilwoman Wass?
Here.
Councilman Clearman?
Here.
Councilman Maholland?
Here.
Councilman Quarles?
Here.
Forum is present. First item on the agenda is for a moment of silence for former mayor and fire chief Ken Warfield.
And for those that are interested, Mr. Warfield is over at Yute Funeral Home tonight and tomorrow, and his funeral is on Thursday. So there's still time to be able to pay respects in person if you still wish.
First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve with one change. I'd like to move the public hearing in front of the closed session.
Move the public hearing before the closed session, you said?
Correct. Yeah, let's put it as the first thing after we do the city council minutes, then do the public hearing would be the next thing. So that would be the first thing.
Oh, right before public questions?
Correct. Yes. That, you're okay with that? Yep.
Second.
Okay, any other questions?
Wouldn't we do it after the public comments? Because it's public comments regarding items on the agenda.
But the public hearing, they're going to be able to talk about those. You're going to hear, that's what the public hearing is. So they can, then they can talk about that, so it's not repetitive. We don't do it twice, they don't have to do it twice.
Sure.
So point of clarification, the agenda is being amended by adding, moving the public hearing immediately following approval of the minutes.
Correct. Correct.
And that was seconded by Councilwoman Wass.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, approval of city council minutes to a regular meeting minutes of June 4th.
Move to approve, Dow.
Support Quarles.
Any questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, public hearing. Public hearing to consider the 2024 streetlight special assessment.
Okay.
Mayor, would you want me to set a three-minute timer? Are we just going to run?
What are we? Do we want to have a three-minute?
Three's good.
Three minutes, fine. Okay. Okay. Three minutes. Okay. Okay, the public hearing to consider the 2024 streetlight special assessment is now an open. If you have any comment, please approach the podium, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name's Rick Stoner, live at 37540 Hillcrest in Wayne, and been here since 1989. This is the first time I've ever had any issues regarding street lighting in the entire time that we have lived there. Now, I received two pieces of paper, one on page 172, addressed to both myself and my wife Patricia. It says here, frontage of 40. I don't know what that is, because I can't see anything regarding 40 on the, uh, the site plan. And then on page 173, it's just got myself here, frontage of 95. Now, that agrees to the survey on the paperwork that we received in closing. So my question is, basically, do I only have to pay one of these? Because the one for 40 frontage, I can't find out where that is on the survey, and the amount has gone up since the 23, or 22 bill from '64, now it's going up to '75. And I thought it was supposed to be a, one amount for the entire billing process, which was, I think it was four years at the first time, four or five years first time. So anyway, my question to council is, do I disregard the one that says 40 frontage? Because there's nothing regarding our survey that indicates 40 feet, if that's in feet. I assume it is. So that's one of the questions I have. Do I only pay one of these, or do I have to pay both of them? And the original information that I think we received was that it would be a bill to our tax bill of one time per year. So I've got a 22 water bill, a winter bill, and I've got a 23 winter bill, and I've paid it twice. So I need an answer. You know, which one do I pay? Because the frontage on here says 40, and the frontage on the survey is 95. So, you know, there's quite a bit of difference for that, and I see this one being correct, says 95 on the frontage. So I just, do I disregard the one that says 40? Can anybody answer that?
City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With unique situations like this, I'm going to recommend that I meet with you, Mr. Storm, outside. I'll get your contact information, and we'll look into, you're only going to pay one bill.
I don't need to pay two.
No, of course not. You're only going to pay one bill, but I want to get your specifics, and I want us to look into them.
Okay.
And get back with you, so we'll get your contact information and get your answers.
Sounds good.
Okay, you got it.
I think that's all I have, because everything else, like I said, is how long we've been here, and the first, this is the first time that I have seen any issues regarding lighting. And I don't see where anybody, since this has started going into, into the scheduling, where anybody has been out along my area of Hillcrest, working on any lighting. So we're paying for something that's not being done. That's the way I see it, unless somebody can tell me, if they've got records of people being out there working on the lighting, I would appreciate it. So that's my concern.
Okay.
I had, I'm going to have Lori go out, she's community development, she's going to go out in the hall with you.
Get your information.
Get your information.
Okay.
And then we'll contact, so that I can handle the next person that comes up.
Sounds good. No problem. Thank you.
And we'll go like that. Okay, thank you.
Before I call in the next person, I'm going to have the city attorney kind of explain the process of what's going on, just so everybody...
This is a multi-step process. I think the last time council went through this, it may have been Mayor Rasa and councilperson, Councilman Dowd, were the only two people on the council at that time. So there's going to be a hearing tonight, and then there's going to be another hearing. And at that hearing, the council, in that date, the meeting in July, the council will decide if they're going to be, if there's going to be a streetlight special assessment. If so, how many years it would be, what the rate would be, and then that would be determined in July. And then after that, there's going to be a meeting in August, where there would be implementation, and the council will vote on the implementation. So the council's not voting on anything this evening. This is the evening for the hearing, to listen to the concerns and thoughts of the resident regarding the streetlight special assessment. The only, the council would have an opportunity to make a decision at the meeting in July, and then if council determines that there is going to be a streetlight assessment, there would be another vote in August to basically put it into effect, to order the assessment out of the tax rolls.
And if the council chose to not have it, then there would be nothing in August.
If the council chose to not have a streetlight special assessment, then there would be no further action in August. It would basically be concluded with the vote to not go forward in July.
Okay.
And then, I guess, if people come up, and the answer is, I'm sure there's quite a few folks in the audience who aren't used to coming up for public comment. Ordinarily, council does not engage in questioning, it's an opportunity for the public to state their thoughts. And then if they do have questions, it looks as though City Manager Webb is more than happy to take their information, along with Director Gawen, and answer whatever questions they can.
Just one more comment, in all the time that we have lived here, never seen the, anybody out looking at the lighting, or maintenance, or anything like that. The lights always go on, and they go off. If there's a power outage, well, that's a different story, but normal operation, normal operation is that they work all the time. So, good job.
Thank you. That's good news.
Yeah, and I just want to make a comment. So the, the street lighting assessments for all the lights, other than the green lights downtown, it's not just your light in your neighborhood, you're paying, everybody is contributing as a whole of all the lights in the city to pay for that bill. So just to, so that if that question's answered, if that's a question that people have, just so that's answered for you, before you come up, would have to ask that.
Is green pole lighting too?
No. No, he said the green pole. But now, if I'm there 43, and it's...
We're going to go person by person at the podium.
Hi, I'm Emily Gable, I live at 3384 Laurel Street.
Okay.
I purchased my home two years ago. I received a letter as well. Mine was addressed to the gentleman that owned the home, who passed away back in 2014. There was a post in the Wayne Neighborhood Facebook group that had over 300 comments that had a similar, people of similar experiences as myself, that either moved out of state, that basically no longer own their property, majority of them, or didn't receive a letter. So I, I know this can't be addressed, but I would really, and I think a lot of the other residents, would love to have some visibility into what the process is, on how this was determined, on how these letters were sent out. Because when I closed on my home, the day of the closing, I came up to City Hall and gave my paperwork from my closing, to have my home put into my name, and I've received numerous paperwork addressed to this gentleman that passed away, including voting paperwork for him and his wife. So would love to have visibility into, and I'm sure a lot of the others in this room, would love to have visibility into what this process was, on how these letters were sent out, as well as what the process is in terms of what this money is going towards. I know I haven't had any issues on our street and in our little neighborhood with any of the streetlights, but what this money is going for, since the city is maintaining this, would be very helpful and very insightful. So, and anything that we can do as residents to help maintain these records, if it's coming from county information, if it's being maintained by the city, whatever we can do to help as well.
Yep.
So.
I'm with, I don't know which one. We're going to answer some, because there's, there was an issue...
There's a little bit of an overview that I think needs to happen.
Okay.
So this is a renewal of, and what's proposed currently is a five-year renewal, and they started in 2012, and then again in 19, was it 19?
19 to 2023.
And then this is the next renewal, and it's for all of the lights, as the mayor said, and it's to keep them all operating. So basically, it's Detroit Edison's Light Bill to the city, divided among everybody that lives here, works, owns a business here.
Business and residence.
And then with the, the list that was used, and the notice that was used, that, that's where the error was, because they used the template from the last one. So that's all been updated. So with, are you doing another notification?
There will be another.
There'll be another notification, and it'll have corrected address names, because it goes with the property, not the homeowner. So the, when the next one comes out, it'll have all the names right, and as right as it can be, I mean, it's a snapshot in time, right? But, and...
For clarification purposes, though, what is the difference between a property owner and a homeowner? If the homeowner is, if, if I owned my home, I would own my property as well, wouldn't I?
Right, right, unless, unless you were a landlord.
Okay.
And you rented your property to someone else, the bill would go to the landlord, not the person renting the property, whoever owns the property.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, so that's already been corrected in our system, and it'll be correct, the time and the addresses will be correct, the next notice you get for the next public hearing.
Can I ask why there wasn't an audit done before this letter was sent out? To prevent you all from the headache of having, and council from having to answer these questions and deal with all of us, and the backlash for all of this? Well, I understand that you guys have limited resources, and money and funding and being one of them, but...
Just to be honest, you know, we had some, some new people that are in place that haven't done it before, and so it was just, it just beginning learning, and it was just a mistake. They, they read something from how they were told how to do the process, and they didn't, there was a step that was not in the, the process, that was given to them by the previous director, and so...
Who retired.
That retired, and so they, they now understand that they got the wrong list.
I completely understand that, but in terms of a renewal, you would think you guys would do an audit. I mean, ownership has been changing throughout this city.
But that has been done now for the second letter.
It's already done.
It's, they, they, once that happened, they realized that there was a problem, and it, it's been corrected.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that issue's been corrected, and there's going to be another notice that will have the corrected information.
And for clarification, this letter is being sent to everyone, correct, in the city?
All the property owners.
All the property owners. Okay.
All property owners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Maggie Wood, I live at 35535 East Michigan Avenue, and I will assure people, lights go out all the time on Michigan Avenue, and they get repaired all the time on Michigan Avenue. I guess initially, my thing, and I wasn't here for the initial one, I must have been sleeping five years ago, I don't know why I was sleeping, but I was, and, and I know you can't answer questions, that's fine. But I, talking to the city manager, I understand that everybody in Wayne got one of these, and I think that that's great, because otherwise, I thought, I'm on US 12, why am I paying the state's bill? But, but if everybody gets it, that's fine, because I agree that we need lights in Wayne. I was also glad to hear that you guys are aware, we have a drug problem in Wayne, so we need lots of lights in Wayne. And so that was that. My, my only question is this, and again, I think he's allowed to talk, right? So, again, I was sleeping five years ago, five years before I wasn't here. My question is, why, rather than a special assessment, why is this not raises a vote at a mileage increase? Is there a reason?
It's a different statutory process. I don't know, this is a, this would be at least a third renewal? I don't know.
Yeah, it started in 2012.
It started in 2012.
I came in 13, so that one was all right.
Yeah, so there's a specific statutory framework in Michigan law that allows communities to, to assess for street lighting in this matter, and we're following the, the state statute with respect to that.
Very cool. So, thank you.
Yep. Someone else?
Good evening. My name is Amanda Cummings, and I reside at 33212 Gerald Street, Wayne, Michigan. And, you know, I'm not that experienced with this, and I'm here to educate myself on this process, but, you know, as you said, that, it's a new, it's a new council, and people have retired. I think there needs to be a policy in place to outline how these activities function, right? So that there are no more mistakes. I work hard for my money, and, you know, looking at this letter, getting it, as I, you know, I'm looking at it, it says the first assessment, $75.63, and if it's for five years, that equates to about $378 over the course of five years, is that what I'm reading? Okay. I, you know, I would like to have visibility of it as well. I live on Gerald Street, and our street is very dim over there. There's a light, but it's not very light. I've, I've had to put up another light in order to be able to see, so that's why I'm here, and I hope next time I have to come out, that I'll be better able to speak to what's going on here. Right now, it's, it's a learning thing for me, and I'm not very happy with it, because I just had my taxes go up, and then I got another bill telling me that I'm going to pay $75 more. Not very happy with that.
Thank you.
Nancy Pride, I live at 35246 Courier Street, Wayne, Michigan. I remember the first time that I came to one of these, I'd been here in Wayne since 1968 in August. The hardest thing for me was to see that the owner of the house is my husband, who has been dead for 10 years. That was the hardest thing to see. I know that women could vote, and I know that there were women who weren't allowed to have credit cards unless a man signed for it. It was the same thing in 1968, excuse me, 1986, women could not buy or own property without a man signing. My husband and I signed this document to buy the house, both of our signatures were on there. So that attitude needs to change, too. And hopefully, putting my name on here isn't going to jack it up, because I sold my house. The thing that I'm concerned about is what you were talking about. There are some areas that are not lit well, literally. They're dim, old-fashioned lights, hanging little balls, they fill up with water, you don't get any light if they fill up with water. And yet, in some of the areas of our district, they have several lights, six feet apart, lining their streets. So that needs to be equalized right away, if you're going to be asking for this amount. I just hope that, I know that we have, physically, in our block, we have 1, 2, 3 in a short area, but they're the old lights that hang from a light, just suspended in space between two poles, and they're the old ones, were probably put in when the houses were built in 1956. I'm sure the wiring has been changed. But that's just my concern, is that we need to actually go to these areas that we're asking them to pay this 75.63, and see what kind of lighting they actually have. Now, the people that live on the condos on the river and all of that, they actually don't have any lights in their subdivision at all, other than what's on their garages. There's two lights on their garages. There are lights down John Hicks for them, but there are no actual pole lights from the city in those condos, and that needs to be addressed, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Daniel Valdez, I've lived in Wayne for about 40 years, live over in Gloria, right by Tap Elementary. If some people have a footage of 100, and I have 43, why do I have to pay the same amount? And another thing, in my house, I'm standing on the porch, taking a picture of the darkness that I have, okay? And that's been like that for 30, 40 years. Dark. So I had to install a, a light bulb that, when I opened the door at night, the light would come on. Shouldn't I get the city to pay some of my electric bill? I want this darkness away from my house, so I can get up and, and go outside and do whatever, I want to watch water to flowers, or whatever, I want to be able to be out there without having to turn the electric light on. That's what the city lights are for. Can I get an answer about the amount of money I'm paying? Shouldn't it be less?
No.
Yeah, he can give his information to Lori.
You can give your information to Lori. Information, she could talk to you more.
Especially your address.
Yeah.
4850 Gloria.
Give it to Lori outside, so she can write it down, because I'd like to look into the areas that you say are not well-lit.
Okay.
I'm actually texting the DTE lady right now.
And I just want to make a point that, from that question, so there's a price from 1 to 100 feet, 101 feet to 300 feet, 501 feet to 1,000 feet, and over 1,000 feet, so it's broken down in four different categories. So that's how they, it was broken down from a number of years ago, but that was the best solution at the time, and that's, that's the method, is why. It, it'll vary, but it's between those ranges for people.
That would be nice, if you guys would make that kind of awareness known to the residents. I sat here, first time to a meeting, I've been away for 17 years. I just listened to the city manager, what's explained in the process.
Yeah.
He's using me getting up, a lot of the answers I had.
Yeah, I, we're, we're going to continue this one, sorry, yeah. I do think maybe we need to put a document of frequently asked questions about the streetlighting assessment that we could have here for, for residents, because I think that there's a lot of misinformation that are, is out there, just not understanding.
It could be on the website.
Well, it could be there, too.
Definitely.
Yeah, both places, yeah. Yeah, both places, yeah. Yeah.
Website is not the official communication of the city of Wayne.
Yeah, go, go ahead and you can start your.
Pardon?
Go, go ahead. Your three minutes.
Osborne, Adele Street, Wayne, Michigan. I received this letter and, uh, received the letter, it's pre-sorted. Uh, no tracking mark from the United States Postal Service, the United States Government. Uh, it was done by a, a quick permit, number eight five seven eighty-seven out of Dearborn, Michigan. Uh, the inside enclosed letter does not even have a date on it. Not, not a date on it, signed by the clerk, but not even her official initials on the bottom. Um, I was astounded by it, by not having that basic thing. Uh, it's been a long time since I ever saw a city of Wayne doing operation and maintenance. And I hope our city manager is taking all these notes to compile and put together in a combined, uh, article that can be given to, uh, the people that ask for it, citizens that ask for information. Uh, I was here many months ago when you had, and watched your, you had a, a balanced budget produced to you by a Plant Moran executive, uh, Brian Camilleri. And he said, "Your budget looks pretty good and you got a good bond issue going." Okay, fine. So what got in somebody's mind here in the city council or one of the executives up here to say, "Well, let's try another assessment"? If you were here with the DTE making an agreement back in Bob English days, they said, "Oh, we're gonna, we're, we're hard on money. Can you give us the kitty a little money?" So we had a fifty percent assessment. Then DT came in with this beautiful contract with LED lighting. Well, and it says, "Well, it costs us some money, but over five years, we did save money." When we and Vern Amos asked the question, "Are you going to return that money to the citizens, what you saved?", uh, your answer was nil, nil. The council did not respond. No, we, no, we, we got the money, we're going to keep it. So likewise, again, we saved. According to the United States Census record, there's, uh, five thousand four hundred and forty-five, uh, uh, dollars that are made from homes. Uh, times five years, you make in twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. This is sixty-five percent of the people that live and own their homes in the city of Wayne. Forty percent of those are over fifty-five. Did I interrupt you?
You're, you're, you're three, you're three minutes, they're up.
No, it's not.
Yeah, we, we said that three minutes.
I've been watching the clock.
Well, your, your three minutes are up, sorry.
Well, I'm going to continue on because there's one thing. Uh, I could have come here and Ms. Webb can a, answer for that. You sent out this paper that said the meeting was going to be at six o'clock and nobody had the kindness to put a notice on the door and said it was changed. Only some people that ran around said, "Hey, I found on Facebook it's changed, it's seven o'clock." So I have to thank Ms. Webb and say thank you very much because I made an official request for her to open the door early so all of us citizens here could sit here in the cool, in a cooling site. And Ms. Webb followed that and I thank her very much for it, but please.
I just, I just have one question, it'll probably be answered outside, but just so I want to make sure. I know that the final sentence says a written appeal may be filed with the state tax tribunal within thirty days after the, you guys all have this. I just want to make sure all boxes are checked. Is there something specific that I need to do to, so that I'm not negating a, an appeal thirty days from now?
You should be, you should answer that. Can he answer that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you talking about, on your notice, once the assessment is finalized?
Right, that there's thirty days from that, but they, uh, well, can, I'll continue.
But you understand there isn't going to be an assessment that's finalized now?
Right, not until August, but, so then I would have thirty days after, but I have to do some sort of protest or something.
Let me, uh, if, if you could give your information to Ms. Goen and then you can forward that on to me and then I could reach out to you and try to get specific answers to what you're requesting, okay?
And opportunity won't be missed tonight? That's just.
No, this is just a public hearing. There's no assessment being decided on tonight.
Okay.
So no clock is running in terms of an appeal or anything like that.
Right.
At this point, this is the public hearing, there won't even be a decision on an assessment at the earliest at one of the July meetings.
Right, right, okay.
But if you get your information to Ms. Goen, I could reach out to you and make sure that I can answer the best I can, whatever your question is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Good evening.
Uh, I live at four three three nine Adam Circle. I also got one of these that are in the past owner's name and, uh, also my water bill, it comes in his name. Um, but my tax assessment comes in my name, so it's kind of confusing. Also, uh, I don't even have a street light, so if I could, if I do have to pay it, could I get one? The money, the, the, the money from taxes and stuff, I don't know, is this getting tacked on to the assessment that we had gotten a few months ago or is this, this is getting added on, I'm assuming, correct?
This is a current assessment that we have and it's just a renewal of that, if it goes forward, it's a renewal of what we're currently doing. So that would be different than anything else. It's a separate item. It's, it's based on what, what DTE's bill is and their, their prices are going up unfortunately. As you've seen in the news, they've, they've increased their, their pricing. We're just, it's a pass-through really for, the city's passing, passing that through, the citizens are paying that bill.
That's, that's all I.
If you would give her your address out there, because you said you don't have a light. So I, I do, I am interested in seeing where people don't have adequate lighting so I can make a report of that and give it to DTE, see what we can do about it.
Yeah, al- also make it, have her note the other items of your, your, what's not on your, getting your bill properly, you said.
I have one follow-up question, just based on something that she brought up. So you guys noted that you're going to be sending out updated letters? And then the renewal is going to be taking place in August. Based on the thirty-day follow-up, when is the new letter going to be sent out? Is it going to allow a thirty-day period for everyone that didn't get the letter and those that didn't, like, is there going to be enough? Can we get a timeline just as well for the residents? Is that something that can be included in the FAQ?
Not, not tonight.
No, I understand that tonight, but something in the FAQ and that can be.
In that, in that question and answer, we can have a timeline of how the process will work.
If you put together a frequently asked question, it might be a good item for that.
Yeah, and that this is something that can be posted on the website as well.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Linda Scroy. We have a business at four four seven six Treadwell, Wayne, Michigan. Um, back a few years ago, we were charged for the street light at Annapolis and Treadwell, which is a string light, which when we had problems with the light going out, city said, "Oh, you have to contact DTE to have that taken care of," which took a long time to get that light fixed. Then we get this first-year assessment, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents for lights that really don't affect us. We're not downtown, we're off in the middle of a subdivision with poor lighting. So I would like to find out how much this actually is going to cost us and why it's gone up so much. And we've already paid for a street light on our corner.
Yeah, I would ask that you would give your information to Lori so we can look into it specifically, yep.
All right, thanks.
Hello, my name is Aaron Olet. Uh, I own property on Glover Street. I just wanted to clarify something. I didn't personally see the sign because I believe a man said there wasn't a sign posted on the door. And I didn't see it personally, but I saw several people go up earlier today, um, I think at five forty-five and there was something posted and they let me know that there was something up there saying that it was rescheduled for six o'clock. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Ray. I live on Pinewood. Um, I guess I have observations more than questions. I noticed that Westland just redid all their street lights along Wayne Road. And nobody I know in Westland got a special assessment for that. Where's all the money from the dispensaries going? Why isn't that helping with our lighting? And seniors are struggling to pay for food and medications and DTE went up anyway and now this is a special assessment to benefit DTE?
They just, it's just paying the bill.
Pardon me?
It's just paying the bill, the DTE bill.
Right, but our individual DTE went up, why do we have to now pay for the streetlights that other cities aren't doing that, that I'm aware of? Westland, like I said, they just redid all down Wayne Road from the ground up, wiring, the piers, the mass, the lights. Nobody was special assessed for that. We already pay a fortune for leaded water in Wayne. And people just, we just can't keep paying more and more and more and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth. I live on Green Bush and it's not so much questions as I just wanted to make a couple of statements. Um, I've been to, this is my third time around for the assessment for the lights and every time we've had a special assessment meeting or a hearing or whatever you want to call it right now, um, you say, "Oh, we're going to hear your concerns and yes, but we're still going to vote on it and you're going to do whatever you want to do anyways, which is always pass the bill and pass the puck to everybody else and it's not right." I live on disability. My disability does not go up on, uh, according to how much my taxes are going up a- and of course the special assessment as well. Um, it's not right. I don't think it's fair that everybody is having to pay for city lights, um, when they don't have a, a light in their yard. And after listening to everybody else's complaints, they're not working great anyways. When is the city going to do something about trying to get away from DTE and do something else to pay for these, uh, lights? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I'd, I'd prefer to have everybody else speak first if that's okay. I, I, and, and very quick, or you can give your question to, okay, yeah.
I just wanted to have on public record that I protest with my name and address. Is that something we do?
The meeting's being recorded.
Yes.
Okay, so Jessica Olet, three five three one nine Glover Street, Wayne, Michigan. Four, four eight one eight four. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Steve Coats. I live at four five six zero Treadwell. Uh, I want to start off with a, a quick question for the city attorney or the city manager if they have, uh, any answer on that. If you guys have a rough estimate of, you know, what the cost would be for the maintenance of these lights over the cost, over the course of a, a year, uh, through DTE?
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I wouldn't be able to give you a breakdown of what the maintenance cost is opposed to the cost of the actual lighting is. Uh, maybe.
They don't provide us, um, they maintain the light network just like the phone company maintains the phone network and the cable company maintains the cable network. So they just give us a bill, like you get bills at your house. So they, they don't, they don't tell us that. I, I apologize, but.
So just, just like with the new meters there, they, they send you the blind bill so you can't check yourself.
They, that's how they do it.
So just a little bit of quick math, um, if you look up on the census, there's roughly seventy-eight hundred homes in the city of Wayne. And just at the low end, at seventy-five dollars per household, that's five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year. That does not include the businesses because I could not find the number of businesses in the city of Wayne. So we're going to be looking at well over a million dollars to pay DTE per year.
Um, how many, how many addresses did you say?
Uh, roughly, there's, according to the twenty twenty-three census, there was, uh, like seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four, I believe, residences.
I think that's including businesses.
It is.
Because I, I mailed to the entire city and that's closer to that number. So I think that includes everybody based on that number.
But even at that?
Yeah.
That, that's over a half million dollars for lights.
Oh, yeah, exactly. That's.
I think so.
Uh, maybe time to invest in solar for many of our lights around the city instead of depend, being so dependent on DTE. Just a thought. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, Mark Carroll. I own the property at four three three nine Vanoy. Uh, by paying attention, I had a ton of questions when I got here, but most of them have been answered.
Okay.
So just to clarify, this is a third in-statement of this assessment? Is that correct?
First.
All right.
Of the three.
No, no, no.
No, third renewal.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
So this is a renewal of an assessment that, so the vague letter is the biggest complaint, it appears to me, from almost everybody going on. And what we don't have and no one has asked yet is, what was the previous assessment? So that we can actually see what an increase is on say a frontage of under a hundred feet. So that I see, most single-family homes are set up that way and everyone seems to have that seventy-five dollar number. What was the previous amount? So that we can see that how much we're going up.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine dollars?
No, sixty.
All right, so we're looking at, you know, roughly a sixteen-dollar increase.
We'll get back to you if you give us your name and your number and we'll give you the real number.
Okay, and then other than that, yes, the letter was very, very poorly done and that seems to be a lot of the confusion here.
Agreed.
Again, Mark Carroll, four three three nine Vanoy, and I just wanted to be on record here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your real number is thirteen dollars and thirteen cents you raised that compared to the official water bill.
Excuse me. Water bill.
And that was at sixty-two seventy-one.
Victor, please, you got somebody who would like to speak?
I'm Howard Aldrich. I live on Taft. Uh, I have the correct information. The owner's right, the frontage is right, so there's no, no issues there. I am opposed to any renewal of this millage because I find the street lights to be as useless as the parking garage and the outdoor emergency alert sirens. It's always been baffling to see street sign, the street lights every fifty feet along Mermon, if I'm even out at night, until one gets to the border at Van Born where it turns pitch black until you get to the airport. To cross the north border at Michigan Avenue, you'll see street lights only at the intersections all the way to Livonia. Obviously Romulus and Westland don't think street lights are necessary. How is my quality of life going to change if the lights are turned off? It brings back the misinformation of that road millage over a decade ago. As soon as it was approved, you quickly applied the money to Glenwood Heights and John Hicks Road, suspiciously where all the city officials lived, until all the money was gone. Then when people started asking about neighborhood streets in other parts of the city, you threw up your hands and told us there was no money left. Let me go back to something I said then. One cul-de-sac out there was completely repaved. Not even one percent of the residents in the city of Wayne will ever drive in that cul-de-sac, but one hundred percent of us paid for it to be improved. While we're talking about just constantly taxing, let's, let's talk a minute about seven different school millages that we're already paying. That doesn't include the Wayne County Community College. The school district is missing millions of dollars, so they put on, the superintendent on leave for the summer with pay while they start drafting the wording for Millage Number Eight. I suggest that you dismantle that siren system and sell it to some community that needs it and will use it for its intended purpose. I don't need a reminder that it is one PM on the first Saturday of the month. That's all you've ever done with that siren? How many decades have we had it? Uh, two years ago, we had a severe storm blow through that uprooted and blew. Two years ago, we had a severe storm blow through that uprooted and blew over trees. So many live electrical wires were down that residents had to use their own vehicles to block the roads. Two houses within a block of me were on fire and I watched an Inkster fire engine come down my street with their emergency lights on. Power was out for 48 hours. Did the city warn us that a severe storm was coming through by, by blowing the siren? No. Did they come by with some means for us to recharge our cell phones? Did the city find a company that makes dry ice to come out to a location to sell us a small block of dry ice for our refrigerator? No. You don't think of us in that regard. Last year, the National Weather Service interrupted TV with a tornado warning.
You're, you're at your time, so if you can...
Toward Westland and Metro Airport, how could that not affect Wayne? Did the siren blow? No. Public safety is not your priority. I'd like to ask one final question, have you ever voted no on an expenditure of our taxes that actually benefited the residents?
Anyone else?
I have one more comment. I notice a lot of us are senior citizens and we're still paying school taxes. I have, I never had a child go to school in Wayne. My, my child graduated 20 years ago and I'm paying for the college. And then we keep getting all these other things added on, so...
And the city sees none of that.
That's why we're complaining, we're struggling.
Yeah, the city, and the city gets none of that. Ms. Bunnick has raised her hand.
The one question I have is, everybody tells me that it has nothing to do with the green lights downtown, right? But who pays the electricity?
The DDA pays the electric bill for the green lights.
Do the green lights get paid by who?
The DDA.
Okay.
Ms. Bunnick.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Sharon Bunnick, Sim Street. I have lots of streetlights, more than I ever needed, it's never dark at my house. That's what's unfair about it, that's why people say, I don't mind paying for this, there's an empty light on my street. I have six out my front window, but anyways, that's the Cobra system, that's the way we started all of this and we should have made some changes along the way. I've always supported these streetlights, I think I've been paying for them since 2012, that's quite a few years. I still support them, I still want my streetlights, I live in the city, I want streetlights. Now, would you include in your list of information and questions for people that haven't lived here for so long, somewhere in our budget, we have paid DTE, the electric bill, it's probably a separate item, I didn't look it up. For streetlights, would you let us know what that is in your list of questions? We would appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments, I understand...
You have three minutes now.
Name Samuel Davis, I've been in Wayne for 17 years, 75312 Moore Street. Basically, that's all I think a lot of us want to see is transparency. You know, if you're paying the bills, somewhere where we can see what the bill is. You know, we all know DTE charges for the electricity, but when asked, no one had a dollar amount of what actually we're paying. Maintenance fee would be, you know, something that would be helpful too. Because I got a light by wire and like the other gentleman up here, I've never seen nobody out there doing any maintenance with light by wire. And I know years before the LED, I was told to call DTE also. And DTE was the one who came out and did it, so it's just a lot of transparency. Like I said, my answers was answer a lot just listening to, you know, the city manager, I think Ms. Webb, right? I was just, she was looking at me, listening, and I'm like, you know what, she answered a lot of my questions. Technically, I could have got up and left out the room, but I wanted to hear what everyone's concern was, so that's why I stayed to see what the rest of the residents, you know, had, you know, concern and you know, it sounds like there's quite a bit, but if you guys could have better explained it. This letter was very poor, but if you had some fa, you know, FAQs, frequently asked questions and answers there, probably would have been a lot helpful for us understanding how this was actually being done.
I agree.
You said that there was like, I think, four different rates, or three, based off your furnace? And I'm like, she didn't even know that.
Five, yeah.
Yeah, and you said that, when I heard you said, I'm like, wow, that's some more information that I know I didn't have. I don't know if anybody else had, so that's the only comment I had, really.
Okay, appreciate your comment.
Yeah, that's fair.
Thank you, and I'm gonna just, I want to make a quick comment because it was mentioned and just since we have everybody in the room. So in 2012, it started out at $48 and the city had realized that there was, they didn't have everything right in there when they worked with DTE. And then in 2014, it was raised at $72.50. So think about, at that, and I got increments, then at 2016, it went up again to 73.20 and in 2017, it went to 75.09. And then we started doing some, we got some grants to start getting LED lights. And then you actually saw the bill go down in 2018 to 69.46. And this is the lowest one, which is probably the most residents that are here. The people that really see it is the people that have high frontages. And then in 2019, it was still 69.46 and then it dropped in 2020 down to $60.01. And then DTE started raising rate, rates again and it went to 62.71, 64.09 in '22. In '23, it went to 71.14 and in the 2024, which are the rates that you were given. So we actually, when we got the LEDs, it actually went down and you did see savings as we promised. That money was not charged to you. If you go, go back and look at your bills, you will see that the rate actually did drop.
May I?
Yes.
I'd just like to add to that, I've worked in multiple municipalities and went through the street lighting assessment. And unfortunately, what happened with a lot of communities is they invested in the LED lights to lower the cost. Depending on how quickly they did that, like, sounds like Wayne was in front of some other communities because you actually did get to enjoy a lower rate for a little while before Edison raised the rates. There are other communities that just got done lowering the rates by putting the LEDs in and as soon as they got done doing it, DTE raised the rates and it just completely nullified the savings of the investment in the LED lights. But I think what the mayor demonstrated to you is, and we'll get that in print for you so you can see that, is when the bill goes down, yours goes down, when the bill goes up, yours goes up. This doesn't pay for anything, we're strictly a pass-through other than what DTE is charging us for the lights for the city. So if they go down, they'll go down. If they go up, they'll go up the next year, they won't go up past what it says in the same year. So that's just, we'll cover that, so you have it all in print, you can read it. That, that's a very fair ask.
Any, okay, we got somebody right here.
I'm Mary Ann Trudeau, I live on Glenwood Road in Wayne, across from Schweitzer School. The DTE bill, who signed the contract with DTE? The city council, the city manager, who signed that contract? And if DTE is the only provider, that's a monopoly. Is there any way that someone can go in and say, listen, this is ridiculous? What can be done about this? This is greed, pure and simple. It's very frustrating. I'm very opposed to another bill for all kinds of people, a lot of senior citizens.
Any, any, any other people that haven't spoke yet? Any other questions?
I'll see. I'll see.
Yeah, you could just...
Elizabeth Doyle, 36741 Green Bush Road, Wayne, Michigan. And I am very opposed and I want to try and fight if there's an amendment or, you know, anything like that. I just can't do it.
Okay.
Disability, thank you.
Any other comments tonight?
I want to ask a question once more, is there a chance the assessment, the total of the assessments of the folks in Wayne, is there a way that the transparency, we can see what the bill is, how much, you know, what's collected as opposed to what's being paid out?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's fair.
I just have a real quick question. I live on Crescent Court in Wayne. I do have a 100-foot frontage. But people that have 40 or 60 are paying the same as I am, is that kind of fair? I mean, wouldn't there be the same number of streetlights on a street?
It's, it's based on the entire city, not just the street. I mean, it's, everybody's paying the entire bill for all the streetlights, it's not specifically your streetlight and your, your...
I know, but aren't you kind of like getting the $75 from more people with... It just doesn't kind of...
Yeah, it, it's a range from that, it was just, that was the only way to...
Yeah, I mean, 40, 60, and 100 is all in the same range, there's a big difference between a 40-foot lot and a 100-foot lot.
Yeah.
It just, mm.
Yeah, I, I remember at the time when this was, that was the best solution. It was very difficult because everybody would have all these different ranges and it became very difficult.
Computers and figured it out and...
Yeah.
Transparency, just if you would break it down, might you explain it?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah. Any other questions? We, we, I want to get to people that haven't spoke.
You have, well, they'll, they'll get here, don't worry. As you had confessed, the city manager, this was, a letter was put together abruptly. The person is new to the job and proceeded with it, okay? So I make a recommendation for you, council, to really consider it. Get the facts all together, not everybody's running out to the hallway to Lori to give her, Ms. Goan, their information because this is a public hearing, you're supposed to be hearing this. The public is supposed to be hearing what we really like about you people, okay? And this 75.63, I have doubled the amount of lot that this lady does and she has her tax bill right there and she's only at 60 feet and I'm paying the same as she does. Now that's inequity. And I have one other thing to ask. Put the letter back out again and proofread it because I'm sure they have supervisors or managers to read it. If not, there's somebody here that would be glad to do it. And I'd like to know, one question, and you can take that as a fact. When I get an electric bill, it goes right in the stack, bills to be owed. I would like to know what your DTE bill is from, to the city of Wayne for street lighting. Not the green poles, just the green light, okay? Not the green poles, our lighting. Now I want to know, are we, did you pay the bill? Are you over? You know, when a CPA in a plant, Moran, gives you an answer that we got a good budget and everything's okay, how come he didn't mention it? And he's your auditor, wow, man. And you did not come prepared today. You did not come prepared, you should have had the finance officer and other people here who could give answers to the numbers and figures. You're not transparent.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Please come to the... If you could come to the podium, yeah, if you could come to the podium because they can't, we're recording this...
We're trying to save some money on a senior's few dollars. Is there any way that you guys can reduce our car insurance while we're at it?
Hello, good evening. I'm Teandra Wiltshire, 33006 Franklin Street. And I just want to say, like the young lady said, I believe, earlier. I threw this letter away, to be honest with you, because it came addressed to Smith Trust. I just purchased my home in 2020. And if it wasn't for my neighbor informing me of this, I wouldn't have been aware of what was going on. And so, since I purchased my home in 2020, I'm a new homeowner, it's my first home, am I to believe that I've been paying for this light or this light was already in my taxes as well, starting that 2020? So 20, from '24 to '29, if this light is assessed and it is to be, the assessment goes, then I will be paying $75 per year for this lighting?
Yes.
And as, I'm no senior citizen, but as a single mom, this still affects me and this still seems like this is just, I mean, it's, it's, I can't afford this as well. Like the, the people just said, our taxes already have just gone up. And this light, I guess a lot of us, or let me speak for myself, wouldn't have a problem with it. If it did benefit me at my door, it's two of us in my home. I'm at near Vanoy and if it wasn't for the Vanoy probably lights, I probably wouldn't have none at all. Because this light will be, we have one light on our street, which is at the other end of the block, which is also obstructed by trees and branches. So yes, I would like to probably have some better lighting on my street if I'm going to be paying for it.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Yeah, yeah.
I'm Galen Dawkins, I live at 3101 South Newburgh Road. I purchased the house there in 1961. And there is no lighting on the east side of Newburgh Road between Glenwood and Michigan Avenue with the exception of the bridge. The bridge has beautiful overhanging lights on both sides. I don't know who pays the assessment for the bridge lighting. On the west side of Newburgh Road, there is only one residential lighting and that's in front of the Makino House. They got that, Kathy got that by virtue of doing fundraising parties for the governor that was governor of state of Michigan at that time. So contrary to that, the biggest problem on Newburgh, aside, is not the assessment, biggest problem on Newburgh, I hired a grandson to count them. We've got between 150 and 175 oversized, overweight pickup, big trucks running up and down Newburgh. And when they hit the sewer lids, you know they're overweight and they're constantly tearing up Newburgh Road. And if Newburgh Road ever has to be shut off to be repaved, that's gonna be a lot of trouble for a lot of people because it's a main artery.
Okay, thank you. Okay? You have something you want to, sure. Go ahead.
Kirk Malphamson, building official and assistant director of building and engineering. This light assessment is strictly for the safety of the people. When it gets dark, crime goes up. If you value your lives, listen to what we're trying to do here, this is nothing new. We're just trying to make sure everybody's safe. In the process of my time serving the community, I've discovered that about 10% of the people who own the properties have never had the time to call in to make sure that their name's on their property or their phone number, or their email, or anything else. And all you people can help us correct this. It's very simple to do, it's not a big deal. These assessments have been going on for 12 years. It is nothing new. They spent time and I have all the figures and all the numbers and all the bills. Everybody here pays a DTE bill as I do and I'm not real happy with it in the past year at all. And I don't believe any of you people are either. So what it is, actual increase is one and a half cents per night. I'm helping you, I'm just explaining. If you don't want to listen, that's up to you.
Kirk, just...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Just direct it to me, don't...
Sorry, just trying to help everybody out. So the street lighting assessment, the residential, all lots, all lots are exactly the same. So the street lighting assessment, the residential, all lots, all lots are exactly the same. Industrial, one to one hundred feet, one hundred feet to three hundred feet, three hundred one to five hundred feet, five hundred and one feet to a thousand feet. This is all industrial and over a thousand feet. Commercial and streetscape, one to one hundred, one hundred, one to three hundred, three hundred one to seven fifty, and over seven hundred and fifty. All residential lots are exactly the same fee. It has been done that way for twelve years. Nothing is new. You've all been paying it. And the whole thing is, is one and a half cents per night increase over what you're currently paying. There are large amounts, the twenty-twenty-four is six hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and five cents. Twenty-twenty-three was six hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Twenty-twenty-two was five hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. So you can see the increase. Back in twenty-seventeen was the only year that's identical. We're back to current twenty-seventeen assessment right now. We did have the lights LED added in twenty-seventeen and there was a decrease. But as DTE started increasing the bills, the assessment went up. Every year it goes up, it goes up. And it's not going up a penny and a half. We're talking fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year just from DTE. So when that breaks down, the residents are actually the winners of this for safety. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
What's the point of receiving, what's the path?
I just wanted to make a public statement to everybody here, unless I am wrong, but it's my understanding, if they don't want this to happen, they have to protest with their name and address today in order for that, I'm incorrect on that?
No, that's not, it's after it hap, once, if something was to happen, then that's when you make the protest.
Protest, that's when the appeal happens.
That's your protest.
But you have to, that's not what the letter said, that's what the confusion is.
I've got your name, you can talk to Lori.
I'm just getting it out there for anyone else, if they wanted to protest tonight, tonight might be your chance.
Can you take my name and down to, because I would like all the information that we've talked about here so that I can.
Absolutely. Lori will get your name and number. And when we put together all the facts, we'll also put them on the website and it'd probably be a good idea to send them out with the next mailing. We'll include them in the next mailing. So you'll have them like a fax.
I think, I think some people, what they're trying to get across to you is that I have a lot that's forty-four feet in front. And then you have someone who has a hundred and something frontage. And the way I see it is, in some of the subdivisions, they have hundred and twenty, hundred-foot frontages because there's more land around those houses. Where I live, I call it stock houses. There's one right after the other. And every one of them are getting this fee. They're forty-four, forty-five, forty-four, forty-five, forty-four, all the way down the blocks. And I'm sure on Annapolis, it's the same way. So that's, I think, where they're saying the inequity is.
Is there any other questions for the public hearing?
Didn't this gentleman say that everybody was assessed the same price?
As a resident.
Every resident. So frontage has nothing to do with it, is that actually correct?
That's how they figured it out. It's the industrial and the commercial that, that have the, the other numbers, yeah.
I'm going to go back in some of my archived notes that I've taken and I actually walked some of these subdivisions. And I have size nine and a half men's feet. So I walked between each post in Woodbrook and all of the other subdivisions that are what these hundred-foot frontages are. And their lighting system is much closer together.
It's based, those are based on industrial and commercial that are paying the, the fee. All the residents are paying this seventy-six or whatever, the seventy-five, seventy-six, whatever it is.
But you need to look at how the housing stock is and the lighting that is in those systems.
Yeah, the residents are getting the cheapest rate out of everybody. If you were to be an industrial person at a one hundred, one to hundred feet, you're paying two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-six cents is what the request would be. If you have a one hundred and one feet to three hundred foot, it's four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents. If you have three hundred and one feet to five hundred, it's seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents. If it's five hundred and one feet to a thousand feet, it's one thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. If it's over a thousand feet, it's two thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven fifty-four. So the residents are getting the lowest possible rate on how we broke that out to try to make it as, as, take it the easiest on the residents because they're the ones that are living here and paying the bills with their taxes. So that, that's why that was done that way. And then, and then I'm, I also was handed this from Councilman Dowd on this written appeal piece. At the bottom of the letter, it says, "A written appeal may be filed with a state tax tribunal within thirty days after a final confirmation of a public assessment rule, only if that assessment was protested in this hearing." So you said what you said with the hearing or, or at a public hearing to confirm the rule. So you have multiple options. Is there any other, any other comments, questions on the, on this that are, haven't, haven't spoken? Because we still have the rest of the meeting we have to also do.
I guess upon conclusion of public comment on the hearing, you would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, yeah.
You'd make a motion to close the public hearing at the conclusion of comment from the citizens.
Yeah, any other comments?
Do you have to take the podium?
Yes, yeah. Okay, um, can I get?
Just one minute.
Yep.
My comment is, memorial that you put on for the city of Wayne, I'd like to know, I'm the commander of postal fifty-one in Westland. I've been told that if the Wayne Memorial is, does not state, they told me that it looks like.
That's at a later part in the meeting.
I know, but I'm going to leave. City council, they said it looks like a city council meeting. That's what the moment, they're not going to be coming to your memorial if it's going to continue like that. They need names, poster of veterans that passed. They need names and you know, you can get them because you were giving names out at the memorial in Westland. So don't expect any, any veterans to show up at your memorial this year.
Okay, thank you.
Get some names.
Any, any other comments on the public hearing? Seeing none, can I get a, a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, close the public hearing. Support Dowd.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Brock.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass.
Yes.
Councilman Clerman.
Yes.
Councilman Maholland.
Yes.
Councilman Quarles.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now is the time for public questions regarding items on the agenda. Public comment is conducted in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. Each public comment is limited to three minutes, which will, will begin when the speaker approaches the podium unless modified by a majority vote of city council. Public comments shall not be disruptive nor contain any profanity, racial, ethnic, religious, sexual, or national origin slurs or overtones. Public comments shall not contain defaming or slanderous personal attacks. All public comments shall be directed to city council and city council will not respond during public comments. Any violation of public comment procedures shall constitute a breach of the peace. If a member of the public engages in such a breach of the peace, they may be ordered to be seated immediately or removed from the meeting by the chairperson of that meeting.
Yes.
Can I just ask what the FOIA twenty-four thirty-one is? That's all I want to know. What, what, what that, that's going to be voted on approval or disapproval?
Yeah, it, it's a request from a WXYZ TV and we're going to be addressing that later on in the meeting. It's going to be up to the council whether they want to approve the appeal or disapprove the appeal.
Thank you. Good night.
Good evening, mayor, council. Number eleven B. Approval of land use agreement with the Knights of Columbus for the use of city-owned vacant land next to Knights of Columbus, three-one-four-four South Wayne. City-owned parcel, fifty-five double oh three, so July two-four through December twenty-four. This is Division Church and State. You would like to give them agreement for land use. There is a nice metal fence around there saying, open to the public. And it's all fenced off, south on Wayne Road. It used to be a city piece of property with at least a big sign saying three by five or feet saying city property. And if you're interested, call this number. I don't know what happened to the real estate person. Insofar as this item is on the agenda, they've had it before. And since we're all hurting for money, seventy-five dollars for, doesn't matter what size lot you have, I'd like to know how much user fee a nonprofit is paying the city to use it? And also think about the liability. The people that are using it and they have beverages there, who is paying for the liability of that part of the city-owned property? And how much money do we get as a user fee for this time period? And I think it should be open to anybody. Thank you.
Good evening again. I just have a couple of quick questions because I'm looking forward to this presentation on our Gaudi Park improvements. I can't remember. And I know you're going to refresh our memory in the presentation. I'm looking at these fees and these permits from Hennessy. Is that subtracted from the grant money that we obtained through Congresswoman Talib, who obtained about a million federal dollars for us for this project possibly? A half a million, I mean? Okay, so you, in the presentation, you're going to go over all of this. Thank you so much.
Yes, with a number, John Mills from Chestnut Street. There's a number of interesting agenda items tonight. Is there a reason item three could not be combined with item fourteen and done at the same time so that we all don't have to wait while you're in closed session for the bulk of the agenda?
Three.
I know you've already approved the agenda at the start of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, those were, I believe, Mr. Mills referring to the two closed sessions.
Oh.
One of them, I'm going to be conducting in the back hallway and the other one is going to be conducted by different attorneys that are going to be zooming in, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, and the first closed session should be very quick.
Okay. We get to stay and you all move or?
Yes, no, you can, you could stay, but it shouldn't take very long at all for the first closed session. That's why it's at the beginning because it's something that we have to vote on and have to be able to talk about that. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, go ahead and move the agenda.
Item number three is closed session. Three A, approval to enter into a closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two-six-eight, to discuss an attorney-client privileged communication.
So motion, Clerman. Support, Quarles.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Brock.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass.
Yes.
Councilman Clerman.
Yes.
Councilman Maholland. Councilman Quarles.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries, eight twenty-one.
It is 8:40. I need a motion.
Some motion.
Support. Roll call.
Mayor Protem Brock? This is to close the closed session.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass?
Yes.
Councilman Clearman?
Yes.
Councilman Maholland?
Yes.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, presentations. 4A, 8:41, sorry, I needed to record the meeting, the time we came back. Anyways, presentations, 4A, Gaudi Park Water Reservoir Decommission Plan. John Hennessy, Vice President of Hennessy Engineering.
Good evening.
Thank you. But I'm not from DTE. But your duty, Mayor, Council, the public. My name is John Hennessy. I'm with Hennessy Engineers. And a few weeks ago, we were authorized to begin preparing plans for the decommissioning of the reservoir, which is underneath a pavilion through there. We've looked at, we're here to kind of go overview of that. I've provided a presentation. I can provide a presentation to Diane so that we can put this on the webpage to keep people more involved through there as this process begins. Then obviously, there's a proposal from our firm to dovetail this into the park project through there. But to get into the reservoir real quickly, I've provided a presentation that identifies a couple of things. The project findings, what our findings resulted in in bid alternatives to provide the decommissioning in the most economical way. And I want to talk about that a little bit. Then talk about park design considerations that we think are important to the community through there. And then lastly, the project timing. Because we do have grant money into this, and we got to make sure that we can abide by the standing of the timing. Real quickly, which will be on page two of the presentation. Unfortunately, I don't have this for the public, but Mayor and Council. Some of our project findings. We've gone in the reservoir twice now to do some exploratory findings. We've done a detailed ASB build of the columns and the beams. Some of the facts, the reservoir is 50 feet wide, 252 feet long. It was, it was thought to be about 275 feet. It's actually 252 feet. It's about 12 feet tall. It's, the roof deck of the, of the reservoir is supported by three beams, beam lines. One on the north and one to the south that are each 14-inch thick beams. And then the center beam is a 24-inch center beam through there. And there's columns through there. You can tell it was very well-built. I think concrete may have been free when they built this, you know? And some of the things, it has about, about a foot of clay at the bottom of it, of a pure clay. I was actually looking for more of a sediment, a finer silt sediment coming from the river through there. We did find some penetrations of the reservoir with groundwater continuing to come into that. And actually, on page two, in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see where a pipe is coming through there. And you can see where water's meandering through the bottom of, through there. Some other things that are somewhat unusual to see is the electrical conduit is located within the reservoir system itself through there. And looking at the existing pavilion, it appears that the pavilion doesn't have independent footings through there. Rather that the raised platform itself accesses the footing through there. But I'm assuming that they're tied into the beams when they did that in the early 1990s. When the reservoir, when the pavilion was, was constructed through there. So we looked at three different alternatives to bid out the decommissioning. And there's a reason that this decommissioning has probably never been done before. It's a complex little project, candidly, you know? It was built well when they were, when they built the reservoir. But we really looked at three options. The first option had been explored before. It has been basically filling it with flowable concrete, in a sense, you know? You would take kind of a thicker slurry concrete and fill that in. There's a couple of problems with that that, that we foresee in, I believe it was perceived to be a problem even earlier when it was discussed without even our firm. But the volume of flowable concrete is very difficult to control because of all the penetrations within the reservoir system through there. Also, when you, when you fill with flowable concrete, at the very top, you always get a water layer at the very top of it. Because it's primarily wet concrete. It's not dry concrete. And once that water layer subsides and dries, you'll get a little bit of settlement through there. That's why you don't really see that. And that allows for a potential deck and existing pavement settlement on the situation. Thirdly, flowable concrete has a very low compressive strength. It's not like concrete. And we usually really do it just to abandon pipes in place so that when somebody hits- it, they realize that this is an abandoned in-place pipe, you know, it's full of concrete, so it doesn't provide the adequate compressive strength that we would need to, to have the park function as we want to. And lastly, it's cost prohibitive and high potential for cost overruns through there. So, looking at a different approach would be option number two, is we are looking to fill the reservoir with two access points, and then filling the last two with two feet of a pressurized grout or flowable concrete that would be a little bit thicker than the flowable concrete. So, the, the goal of this was really to maintain the, the decking that was recently built through there in front of the concession stand through there, we are looking at excavating two access points within the reservoir decking, and what we would do then is we would drop two machines in there, they would be propane-propelled skid steers through there, we've used those in confined space before, and then they would push the aggregate around, but obviously, once you, if you can picture this, as we are trying to fill up in this wall here, you can only get so close to that, you're not filling it from the top, so you're going from the side, there are a couple of problems, we don't get the compaction that we would like to see, it's, it's very difficult to verify that compaction through there, and then it's also difficult to get a high compaction density with light equipment. We want heavy equipment on there, we want bulldozers, we want sheeps rollers and things along those lines to get us that density. It actually, we have to maintain confined space entry and work procedures through there, and it increases the complexity of the project, and project costs are all really related to labor days that the contractor establishes, the more labor days he has, the more equipment he has out there, the days that we're paying for that equipment, all of those things, so this has a longer labor duration. Lastly, the whole reason of that approach, what we looked at originally was to save the decking, to see if we, you know, so we're not throwing away good money that's after bad money, but there's no guarantee that we're not going to create a problem with that decking, and specifically, what I'm concerned about is if we were to fill that with the two feet of pressurized grout at the top, it could be like mudjacking a sidewalk, there are penetrations and breaches within the roof of the reservoir, so that's going to go right up to that decking, and there's no controlling where that's at through there. So, the third option that we've looked at is, and it's on, on page five, and in the pink you can see is the area, it is to remove the entire roof into itself, and actually, and so, what we're going to do is kind of build this like a layered cake, in a sense, so we're going to take a, a small pinbreaker of a machine and break the roof through there, because there's steel within the roof columns, there's steel within the roof deck that are tied to the columns, that are tied to the beams, that we're projecting that the concrete will break up in very small pieces because it's going to be held by the steel, we have number five bars, I think twelve inches on center across the whole roof deck through there, and what that will do is that will fall into the sludge area, it's not sludge, into the mud area, into the clay area through there, and we're going to now have the top removed, we can actually drop one-by-three stone in, which interlocks one-by-three, it creates a lot of void space, but it's very tight, you can build, you can drive, a lot of roads are built on one-by-three, and then fabric, then we're going to put a fabric over the one-by-three, and then we'll come up with twenty-one double A all the way up to the top. This will ensure that we have a surface that we can drive as concrete trucks cross, we, we, we have no consideration at all. The only two areas that are going to have small areas that we're going to push into is over by what we refer to as the concession stand or the pump house, that's going to remain in place, we're going to keep all the columns and beams underneath that, and then off to the east side, you know, next to the parking lot where there's a little bit of retaining wall where there's some landscaping through there, and that will allow us to really prepare for the park improvement projects, and to go through kind of a timeline, we're looking to bid this project out, that's on the last page, I want to talk about this before we go into, I want to talk about the decommissioning timeline and then review it all. To, we're looking to bid this out July eighth, so we didn't want to do it during the summer because it's going to be very disruptive to the park, we want to be able to make sure we can maintain the park, the summers in the park that we have, and begin to bid this out in July eighth, and have the bids come in at the end of July, and look to begin this project at the beginning of September, September one, we think it's about thirty days, the contractor should be done by October one, at which time, the park project will come into play and the contractor will go, come into that project, so one project, one contractor will leave, and then another contractor will come in. And the reason that we want to do this is the park work is a little bit of a specialty work and fine, fine paving work, flat work, this is, this work, we know a lot of contractors that can do this type of work that would be interested in this project like that, we don't have the confined space issues to deal with, we have the ability to actually just implode it on, you know, break it into itself, and then bring it with a good compaction through there, put a machine in there, you know, a bulldozer that can actually maneuver around through there and have that set up, and build it up as we come along through there. And basically, what you would do is build a road down the center and you just keep pushing it out and building it up as, as you kind of come, come up through there. So, that's our selected option that we're looking to put the bids packages together, and then if you go through pages six, seven, and eight, we've just got a couple of concepts of the park, which is the, the presentation that we have today. Page six shows basically putting the pavilion basically where we have the pavilion now, maybe changing some of the concrete to a concrete textured color through there, we'll be able to select the pavilion that the community and the stakeholders like through there. But one thing that's not shown through here that I want to describe is, is if we redo the seating area up in the pavilion, in the amphitheater area, you know, with new plastic, we would do a color coordination palette so that the seating color coordinates with the textured pavement, if that's what the community wants, textures with the roof color, so it all builds upon itself through there. And there's basically three different types of alternative, alternative number two is the, the same, similar pavilion pushed back through there, and you'd have a little bit larger open area in front of the stage through there, in front of the elongated seating area through there. And then option C is where we have a two-part pavilion, and this is actually a pavilion that we've, we've constructed, and the picture on page eight at the bottom right kind of demonstrates where that's at, but the one thing that's about this pavilion that we like is that it's at two structures that kind of work with each other, and you could see that the, they, the sightline is elongated towards elongated seating through there, and it's got a little bit more of an elliptical portion of the park. Now, these are just shown just as examples, we're not recommending any one of those things, but just to demonstrate some of the other projects that we've done that are similar. Some of the things that we consider important with the park consideration is obviously engage all community stakeholders in the planning process, you know, select the appropriate pavilion and, and focus center of designs, how do we want to see the, the, the seating area look for us, provide multiple options for park activities, coordinate lighting, landscaping and site features through there, looking at the topography through there, what is the most economical and cost-effective way to get us to appreciate that. So, for example, we can, we, if we give up some seating and we have grass that rolls down of natural earth, we don't have the abutment walls through there, so those are some of the considerations that can be looked at with the community to make sure that we adhere to the costs within our grants that are through there. Coordinate all site furnishings into the design, obviously, we've got a lot of furnishings out there that we want to maintain those and make sure that they fit within that, and then obviously, sure, make, ensure the design meets accessibility and sustainability through there. And what we're looking for, the project timeline, just to kind of give you an idea, would be a kickoff like tonight, in essence, in essence, then week of, the twenty-fourth through the next series of weeks, have meetings with the community stakeholders to go through the design elements that are important to the community, and then we can look at budgetary components through there. What we're recommending is we wrap that up by seven nineteen, we would select the pavilion through there, we would order the pavilion on eight-six-twenty-four, that will allow us to make sure that we maintain our spending requirements within the grant period. Pavilions will probably take about three months to get, because we're going to design the, the coloring that we want for the roofing and all of that material through there, that would come in. Then we would put, we would complete the construction drawings during that time, bid it out in, in September, have bids awarded on September seventeenth-twenty-four, have the project start on ten-ten, we're looking to wrap up the decommissioning ten-one. So, now, we have an aggregate base that is an engineered aggregate fill that we could drive trucks across, we can get to the other side where the seating is, otherwise, the other alternative is you'd have to have a pumper truck do the seating from the higher parking lot to the, to the south, which would just create complexity of the project and, and in cost, increase the costs. And I'm here to answer any questions the council has, and, sure.
I'm going to just recap in a way that people in the audience and, and people at home that are following along, looking at the diagram, the complete underground reservoir runs from the pump house across and at, on a slight angle, but it occupies over top of the current gazebo.
That's correct.
So, your recommendation is option three, tear out, drop the cart, concrete to the bottom, which means also tearing out that base of the, includes tearing out the base of the.
Existing pavilion.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that'll drop in there.
Yes.
Give you the safest environment to work, which is top-down versus inside of a.
No confined space and issues.
Yes. So, your recommendation is option three, tear out the cement that we've recently done, some of that cement's recently done.
I know that's a hard pill to swallow, and we're going to bid this as alternatives to allow people to, so that we can come to council and you can see the pricing, but the, the attempt to preserve that concrete is going to be more expensive.
Agreed, I agree. I just, I'm, I'm just kind of talking out loud for, to try to let people visualize this. I, I, I certainly am for that, the things for us, I think everybody on council is the safest environment and the most effective long-term solution that works for the city. My second question I have is, in regards to the seating area, did your group look at that cement, because I know that's not over top of the, the reservoir, that's just built right into, that's old cement that's been there, we've had problems with that, I know Kurt probably would agree, and we've had problems with that, we band-aided the, the damage on it because of skateboarders, so is that something that's also included in the, going to be included in the bid?
That's correct, it is going to be included.
Did you look at that cement?
I've looked at the abutment walls and you can see that they're, they're stressing and some of the concrete that's through there, so that would be part of the park design proposal that we have in front of.
But also demolition, too.
Yes, and the demolition, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that those back walls go all the way down that hill, all the way into that deep, just.
Into the reservoir? Over into that depth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so they're, that's why they're just cut off the way they were, because they were all in, into that hill, very deep, so.
That probably is very true.
And, and.
That would be some of the investigative work that we would have to do, is bore right next to those so that we can see exactly what, how the depth of those walls are and how they, how they interact.
Right, yeah, because the, the rebar was, there was a lot of issues with that, that we just did some things for safety reasons.
Certainly, certainly. I, I will tell you that, that reservoir is, I, I think is about a hundred years, over a hundred years old, is very well-built, I mean, it's obviously a hundred years of no use, though, it's showing signs, you know, in the, in the, in the decking, in the roof, but overall, it's a very well-built structure.
Two questions, to reiterate that, that where the concrete seats, that's going in, going in the hole.
We, we were originally going to collapse the roof, but now we can do that if we do that, because the more that we fill it in with our own spoils.
Yeah.
Crush, we're going to look to use crushed concrete regardless, so we're not looking to get aggregate out of a quarry, just so the public understands, like when you get a lot of road work, they actually buy the aggregate from a quarry that processes it, we're going to be able to take recycled concrete and fill that through there.
We're going to rebuild anyway, so I was hoping that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and then what is twenty-one double A?
Oh, it's a type of road base that has, it has what's referred to as a gradation, as, when I say like one-by-three rock, I mean, that's, those, those are one-by-three stones that are usually jagged and they interlock very quickly, but they have a lot of void space through them, you know?
Yeah.
And that's why it's good for the first three feet, because the clay will come up into those through there. In, but a twenty-one double A is a well-graded aggregate that has a combination of fines and larger stones that, that compact.
Fill in there to make.
That's what we use for a road base.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yes. Project timelines, we have meet with the community stakeholders by project experience starting next Monday.
Well, that is, that, that would, we'd work with the administration to establish who the stakeholders are and, and begin, that's why that's a long bar through there, it's, it's going to be over a series of weeks. Yep.
I had, you answered my twenty-one eight question, we are demoing the theater in all of these options, options one, two, and three, correct?
The, yes, the park, you know, one and two, the theater would be removed and we'd have to pay for that to be mobilized off-site, with ours, we'll be able to break it up.
Do we have any kind of cost estimates for these different options?
I have a, we're working with some suppliers on the recycled concrete to actually get to find out those numbers, we'll have those for you within about a week and a half, two weeks. I do know that the, the, the filling, the concrete, like option one is pretty, is well over about a million four or something to that effect, because we're ordering flowable fill, that's, that's assuming we don't have a breach. You, you, in the, in the problem in the reservoir, there have been many projects that have gone way over budget, when you tell the contractor, we'll pay you X per cubic yard for flowable fill, and the flowable fill just goes everywhere, and it's just can't, it's, it's not a controlled environment.
I also had a question about that timeline, because that seems very quick that we would be meeting next week, and then my other question was eight-twenty-seven, bid project, nine-eleven, bids are due, that's a pretty short, do you have a contractor that you're already looking to?
We've done, we've done a number of parks, and just let, let the council know, we represent twenty-six communities throughout southeastern Michigan, so we've done quite a few of these projects, we certainly have a lot of pro, contractors that we would be able to make aware of that, and it's typical for a two-week bid process through, that's type of work for that, because we'll have a landscaping package, we'll have our flat work package, and then we would have already bought the pavilion and would have had it en route here to us, and so we will tell the contractor, this is the pavilion that, that we have purchased that you are responsible to erect.
So, you have worked with several of these contractors that you would be providing the information about the bid to, but you don't have necessarily a contractor you're looking to work with at the end of the project?
Not on, not on the park, there's a number of contractors that are good contractors that we've, we will well that, you know, but it, it will be bid out through the bid net process through the state of Michigan, and it'd be eligible to anybody that does park work.
Can meet the requirements.
That meets the requirements, and those are the types of things that we'll put within the invitation to bid, that we want to see at least three, three to five relevant projects that are similar in nature and things along those lines. The, a decommissioning is really, for lack of a better term, is kind of grunt work, it's, it's, we can get any utility contractor would be able to do that type of work, and there's a bevy of those that we would be comfortable utilizing. Okay, thank you.
Just want to interject one more comment, and I know that Kurt can have this information, because the last time we put that cement down, our, our building engineering director had mentioned that they had to redo the electrical, I believe, and I don't know, just bringing that up as an observation, and I don't know if it's inside the cement, or if they just kept it under the.
Yeah, there's a combination, actually.
Electrical was an issue.
It's a combination. It's both, to be honest, yeah, it's a little confusion. Yeah, it's a little confusing when you look at the conduit runs that they have in, in the...
Thank you. But there is conduit now that there wasn't before.
Yes.
Yeah, I do know that.
Yeah.
They should have plans of how they, they laid that.
I don't know that we've been able to find those. When they did the pavilion.
Different multiple conduits, different brands that go onto concrete, different parts along it.
Yeah, I saw the empty runs.
For the service pathways.
Yeah.
Do they have plans, do they have plans for the conduit runs?
Yeah, I don't think they, they...
Does the electrical company have...
It's been very helpful with, with our team, getting us everything that, that we have available to us. But by doing this, we'll be able to start fresh, kinda run it right through there, and because we're preserving that little area underneath the, the pump house, that will be filled with aggregate. I don't want you to think that it won't be, but we'll be able to run new conduit through there.
And then, in the pump house, we, we'll be able to decommission that, cause it's not gonna be able to go down anymore, and so...
That will be filled.
You'll go over, that'll actually give us more room in that pump house.
That's right. We'll fill up over the, over the hatch area.
Okay. And then, as we're going through the community engagement, looking at this, what if we, if we decided that the pavilion's in the wrong spot, and we wanted to move it to where the seating was? Is that gonna be a big deal and change things if that was...
If, if, if you were to move it to where the seating is, it changes it just in a, a number of cost items, because you'd have to remove that, um, the earth that's supporting there and put some type of new retaining wall through there, because that wall's not finished. If it were, if they built that and they built earth up onto it, it was kind of left as a rough finish, so it would be a little bit more expensive to create a hard back. So what you would essentially have is a hard back behind you and then sound coming out towards the front, and, um, it, it would, we can look at that, but it's certain, I think it will, the price would be pretty high. That's the only concern I have.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would like to look at it, just to see, just...
Oh, yeah, those are, those are part of our concept plans that we have in the, in the presentation, and once we can, uh, once we learn the design elements, you know, we'll look to, to generate, you know, four to five to six concepts for, for the community to, to select.
Yeah, we've learned a lot because of having that, not being able to use last year, and it, and some things that work better, and I don't think that the pavilion we have is built to the, really the, the way to do concerts.
No, it's really, it's, it's, yeah, it's an old...
There's some issues.
A dated pavilion compared to some of the newer ones that you have. You know, they seem to have like smaller ones, like in the third option where you've got that two pavilions that are right next to each other, kind of tie it off, where the s, the band plays in the, in the smaller area generally and think...
No, because of how we have it set up, you're really throwing it to like ten, fifteen rows of people, instead of having it throw out into the entire park and everybody can hear it equally.
Yeah.
And that's great. We've seen a very big difference in how everybody's experienced the concert because of how we've had to do it in, in, out of the road. And I just think this was poorly designed from the beginning to actually do what we're doing.
Yeah, I think it was, I think they just had that opportunity and threw it up there.
Yeah. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. On the twenty-one A double A, have we, I know you said you were going out for crushed concrete bids and everything. Have you checked with Carlos and Sons to see if, uh, he can bid?
Yeah.
Because I know he's...
Well, that, that's what we're looking at. So that's really, that's why, what, what, we'll be able to get a number. He, he's a good corporate citizen.
Yes.
That I think...
That's where I was going with that.
Yep, can gen, can furnish that material for us at a good price, and, uh, that's our goal.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Anybody else? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yes. Please move the agenda.
Item number six, site plan review. Six A, approval of proposed site plan twenty-two-four dash zero-three, vacant land on Michigan Avenue, parcel number five-five-zero-one-eight-zero-one-zero-one-nine-eight-zero-dash-three-zero-two, for the construction of two three-unit townhomes.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So once again, we have another new housing project here in the city of Wayne. Super excited to have the petitioners with us this evening. Uh, these will be called the Abigail lofts, and we're all familiar with the location of the Wayne Library and the parking structure, and there are some of the, um, current brownstones that are there. Uh, what we're looking at is the, the very large, uh, grass parcel in the picture before you that is going to be developed. Super excited about this. Uh, the site was placed before the planning commission on June tenth and received unanimous approval. Um, there are figures, I have on page eleven conditions. See, I clipped all my pages together. How am I doing? They're, they're, they're typical, uh, conditions that we have. There were not, there was nothing abnormal about the site. There were no issues. It was reviewed by all the departments within the city. Um, I am going to at this time ask Mr. Mustakis if he would come up and just share some details with you. Um, I don't wanna steal their thunder, uh, just about the development and what it's gonna contain, and I think you'll be very excited to hear about what type of revenue something like this, as far as a price point, is gonna bring to the city in the sense that this is gonna continue to increase the value of homes in our city.
Good evening. My name is Bill Mustakis. I'm the project architect. Uh, with me is Mr. and Mrs. Abney, the owner and developer of the property. Um, uh, again, we're looking at constructing two structures, two buildings, with three units each. These are going to be elevated ranch homes, uh, with a garage level, um, uh, next to the existing drive that, that presently exists in the lower level, uh, a basement area, and then, uh, the raised, uh, ranch home with an open loft overlooking the, uh, the first floor. Um, they are gonna have two-car garages attached. Um, and again, we're looking at a brick and a hardy board cement, fiber cement, uh, siding, uh, aesthetic and keeping somewhat with what's already existing there, uh, next to us. Um, I guess that's about it, unless there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and Ms. and Mrs. Abney's available also to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may. Um, I know we got a clock that is in the corner there. Uh, is there any plans to maybe do like seating and make that a, that clock more focal point on that corner, since you're developing that land?
We haven't really discussed it, but I mean, it's something I think we can definitely, uh, talk through with, uh, with Mr. and Mrs. Abney, yeah, definitely.
Mayor, one question. I'm just curious on, uh, exit and entering from that, this added, right, I know right now, I think everybody that has a, uh, lives there now exits onto westbound or eastbound, uh, but with the added, uh, buildings, does that, does that one single e, end point of entry and exit, is that acceptable, or is there gonna be a need, uh, exit through the parking lot area, or...
I, I think, I don't really see an issue personally with having the six additional units there with the existing, uh, driveway. I don't really think that that's gonna have an adverse effect.
Okay. Well, this one question came to my mind, last question, which is, owners of the, uh, current townhouses that are there, same, same, same as this development or different?
So this, Mr. Abney may be, I think it's a different property, it's different development.
Yes, we'll be, uh, so, we're totally different. Uh, however, I have, uh, spoken with the HOA for the current, uh, tenants that, that live there, and, uh, they're very excited to have our property, uh, come in, but their property. The original property was designed, uh, with these units, uh, in mind. Uh, it was gonna be more units along the face of, uh, uh, Michigan Avenue, and we purposely, uh, condensed the, uh, amounting units that we were gonna place there, because, uh, uh, one, you know, I, I really don't care for the single-car garages, you know, uh, most people, if it's a husband and wife, you know, if I'm driving a, uh, a nice vehicle, you know, my wife is probably driving a Porsche or something.
There you go.
We both wanna, we both wanna, uh, you know, park in the driveway, you know, safely. Um, you know, we, 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 we put a lot of thought into the design, and, uh, you know, and we're looking to add, you know, upgraded features and, uh, kinda increase the price point. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, I was, actually was born here in Wayne at Eloise, uh, Hospital. I grew up in Ester, uh, Michigan. Uh, went to Michigan State University, got my degree. Yeah, my degree in, uh, uh, construction management, and I'm currently a general contractor and developer in Atlanta. Uh, built, you know, schools, churches, hospitals, a lot of apartments, um, renovating a lot of housing, uh, in, in, uh, Atlanta, and I'm open to, uh, actually seeing if you all here can direct me to maybe your land bank, uh, of any other properties that you, you know, may want to develop. Uh, we're really looking for increasing our role here and hope, helping build the community up. Um, we're offering these homes at, you know, these, these same townhomes in Atlanta would go for, you know, five, six hundred thousand dollars. Um, here, we're offering, um, a lower price point, starting maybe at three-fifty, three-fifty, four hundred, but, you know, we're looking at other land around where we can probably, you know, maybe increase that value, you know. You know, the overall goal, live, work, play. You know, we like to, you know, bring more affluent people here to, uh, the city of Wayne, and, uh, you know, I, I love the area, I love the atmosphere, I love, you know, everything that's in proximity, you know. Hopefully, we can attract local bars, you know, more bars and, you know, make it, you know, a little more fun, you know, to, uh, new people that wanna live here in Wayne, so...
Uh, I, I, I know I said one question and I lied, and I'm sorry. I, it's just that I have two patent questions, and one's warranties don't apply to, so I can't apply it. But what's your timeline on implementation to completion?
Uh, well, hopefully, uh, we look to break ground, hopefully in August, uh, have everything constructed, no, later in December, um, December, January, maybe, um, you know, and, uh, you know, I mean, it doesn't take long for me to build, you know, uh, these units, you know.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank you, sir, architect, and, and you, ma'am, and sir, for coming to join us. Uh, I see your design here, and I really appreciate it. It's exactly the thing that I think belongs right there. I think you've chosen an excellent spot, and I welcome your current, your, uh, future, uh, uh, investigation into the community. You, you're welcome here with open arms. I know you will find many locations that you may be interested in and other work. Uh, we have nice forested areas, and we are conveniently located, of course, equidistant between Detroit and Ann Arbor. So thank you so much, and, and thank you for visiting us and working here.
Okay, I, um, Lori, I'm just, just trying to double-check your seven conditions, just the one side of the memo.
That's the only part, all I have on the memo. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That is absolutely correct. I'm sorry, we removed the other ones. That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to double-check, there's only one page, and that's, that's good, there's only seven conditions. So you, you're, you're good with the conditions that were presented to you?
Yes.
Awesome. No, I think this is, would be great. I, I mean, it's really great to see people, this is, again, what I've, I've said, that people coming back to the community to make investment, that's how we make this community better, and, and I'm very thankful for you to come back and wanna, wanna do something in our community and, and make the city of Wayne even better, so, thank you. I'll, I'll say more, well, I can't really say more, but I'll let them vote, just to make this formal for you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And I hope to get to see your Porsche, by the way.
Yeah, and, and I wanna apologize for it taking so long for you to get before us tonight. This, that's not a normal case, so...
Beautiful.
Okay, let's move the agenda.
Item number seven, bid awards. Approval, uh, seven A is approval of bid award for janitorial services for routine cleaning of the Department of Public Works, the Building and Engineering, and City Hall Buildings. Administration recommends the low bidder, Universal Contracting Services of Detroit, Michigan, in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars per month to be paid from each department's contracted service accounts. The bidders were as follows. Universal Contracting Services Detroit, Michigan, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars per month. Facilities three sixty, Ann Arbor, Michigan, two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars per month. Suds and scrubs of Southfield, Michigan, four thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety cents per month.
Move to approve the low bidder, Universal Contracting Services, at seventeen eighty-two per month.
Support Brock.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Goen as, as Mr. Schmidt tonight.
Yes, I'm no comparison to Mr. Schmidt. Um, the reason we went out to bid for, uh, services is because the current contractor that we're using, uh, chose to not renew their contract. Um, this actually, uh, with this, uh, seventeen eighty-two, uh, per month is a savings above of what we're currently paying of a thousand eighty-six dollars annually. So we'll have a new company in, and we're going to be saving money.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Lori, have we worked with this company before, or is this our new company?
This is a new company, however. Um, Brian Smith and our DPW department did call and check all of his references, and they were all satisfactory to accept him as a low bidder.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Is this something court workers can handle?
Um, no, so, actually, that's a very good question. Um, and I hate to say this, but when I worked in Westland, when I worked at the Friendship Center, we utilized court workers to clean, uh, the Friendship Center every day. Um, our court work program, while it's growing, it's not consistent that the judge would have people that would be able to come three days a week to do cleaning for us. Same thing with our downtown cleaning. Um, there is a cleanup program. Sometimes they have one people, uh, person, sometimes they have three people. So it's, it's not something we could rely on for regular cleaning services, but that's a very good question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Uh, I must've heard wrong. I thought you said the existing contract is a thousand eighty-six per month?
No, no. We're, we're saving, o, over a year with this new rate of seventeen sixty-two a month, we're saving a thousand eighty-six per year. So it's an actual cost savings from what we're currently paying. So this bid is actually lower than what we're currently paying.
Okay. By a hundred bucks or so a month, it's...
Approximately, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm assuming these are all, the bid went out with the bonded, uh, cert, uh, security bonded rate service, which adds cost to the, but it also gives benefit to the city and the capacity.
Correct. Holds the bidder accountable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dave.
Item number eight, ordinances and amendments. Eight A, approval of the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-four dash zero-three. This is an amendment to chapter eight eighty-eight, mobile food service establishments. Move to approve the first reading.
Support Corals.
Hi, Lori? Is that...
Oh, thank you, thank you again. Uh, so basically what you have before you this evening is our, uh, our mobile food service establishment ordinance, which is our food truck ordinance, essentially. Um, when we put this together, we had understood maybe there were some different types of guidelines, um, based on the fact of some information that we'd actually gotten from an inspector from Wayne County when we had food trucks in our parking lot. Uh, after further investigation and further review and working through the city attorney's office, it's been determined that our ordinance was a little bit stricter than the state of Michigan's. in our parking lot. Uh, after further investigation and further review and working through the city attorney's office, it's been determined that our ordinance was a little bit stricter than the state of Michigan's. So, what we've done is we've amended our ordinance to, if you see, to remove that if somebody, um, doesn't have a Wayne County Health Department license, they can't get a license here. Well, that is totally not accurate. As long as they have their state of Michigan license, they can apply to get a license here with us. Um, now, if the state came to an event, I know I'm elaborating a little bit, but if the county came to an event and they did not have an actual license from maybe Oakland County or Wayne County, then that would be on them at that point. But we cannot issue them a license based on that fact. And these food service vendors do know that they also need a county license. So, this is cleaning up our language.
Any questions for council? Are we voting on this for being a first reading?
First reading, mayor.
We don't have to vote. Or, or we do vote because it's first reading. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Nine A, approval, approval of the reappointment of David Otzman to the Personnel Board for a three-year term to expire July twenty twenty-seven.
Move to approve Quarles.
Support Wass.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten, communications and reports. Ten A, revenue and expenditure report for period ending May twenty twenty-four. This is a receiving file.
Receiving file?
Excuse me. Item eleven, general items. Eleven A, approval or disapproval of appeal to FOIA number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to disapprove the FOIA request by WXYZ.
Second. Quarles.
Okay, roll call, please.
So, the motion was made to disapprove the FOIA number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one. Mayor Proton Brock?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass?
Yes.
Councilman Clearman?
Yes.
Councilman Maholland?
Yes.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eleven B, approval of the professional services agreement with Hydro Corp. of Troy, Michigan, for cross connection control program services in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. This is to be paid from the water budget.
Move to approve Brock.
Support Dowd.
Dave, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
I actually do. Yes, thank you. Uh, so, this is a professional services agreement. This is something that is required, um, not only by Eagle, but as the, uh, Safe Drinking Water Act as well. This is something we've had in place for years. So, um, from time to time, we have to go out to bid. Uh, Hydro Corp. is the main company and this is kind of checking our water connection systems. Majority of this is with our businesses. Uh, when a new business, uh, builds, for example, one of the condi- conditions you'll notice is it says that they have to go through the, you know, the cross connection inspections. So, this is something that is truly required by Eagle as well as the Safe Water Drinking Act that we have to have in place. So, this is, uh, before you this evening to be approved.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Item eleven C, approval of land use agreement with Knights of Columbus for the use of the city-owned vacant land next to the Knights of Columbus at three one four four South Wayne Road. Um, city-owned parcel five five zero zero three nine nine zero zero one five zero zero zero. And this would be from July twenty twenty-four through December twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve Quarles.
Support Dowd.
Ms. Goen?
Yes, so, um, this comes before you every year. Um, as you know, the Knights of Columbus programs the event space, uh, owned by the city. Uh, DDA does sponsor some of the events that they have. Uh, this year, we're going to be sponsoring their hoedown. Uh, we're in discussions with them to potentially, um, do some sponsorship, um, investment towards their Christmas event as well. So, this is simply a land use agreement for them to utilize the land and program the space for the DDA. And I can take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Lori, um, it, logistically, is there any insurance issues with us permitting this to be land used by Knights of Columbus? Do they carry their own insurances and, and is the city liable for anything that happens on that property?
So, as part of our agreement with them, there's a whole harmless agreement that is in place. And they, on numerous events, they do carry individual insurance to cover them as well.
Thank you, Lori.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? One day. You need a roll call?
So, do a roll call. Mayor Proton Brock?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass?
Yes.
Councilman Clearman?
No.
Councilman Maholland?
Yes.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eleven D, approval of the updated agreement with Dearborn Unified Dispatch to provide police and fire dispatching services for the city of Wayne, along with the cities of Westland, Garden City, Inster, and Dearborn for a five-year term.
Move to approve Wass.
Support Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, this is just a renewal of the agreement. We've had, had, we've been a part of Dearborn Unified Dispatch since two thousand nineteen. The program has worked out very well. Um, they've had all the technology and personnel and, uh, they, they do a good job dispatching. So, I'd certainly recommend continuing the agreement. Um.
Sorry, we're, we're having a hard time hearing up here.
So, I would certainly recommend, uh, renewing the agreement. There was one minor change about how some computer entry is done, but we're able to handle that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
This saves us money by doing, uh, multiple dispatching. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes. I mean, quite frankly, if we had to do our own dispatch, I don't even know where we would begin. The terminals alone are somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars, like where the dispatchers sit and all the technology. And then hiring dispatchers, it just, I shudder to think if we had to start our own dispatch, dispatch service again. And, and they, they do a darn good job and they're professional. I have nothing but good things to say about Dear, Dearborn Unified Dispatch.
Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to make that known to the public because I have been asked several times about that. And I, uh, have told them that we are saving a lot of money by doing, uh, multiple jurisdiction.
Absolutely. It would be cau- it would be cost prohibitive to, to start our own dispatch. Um, and just when we switched to unified, Dearborn Unified Dispatch, there is a small cost increase in this, but it's about five thousand dollars a year. Um, but still, I believe when we switched, we were saving in the neighborhood of like fifteen thousand dollars a month, something like that. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, I got, I promise only two questions. First question is, just to get it on record verbally, so everybody at home knows, did our legal, uh, did Mr. Bosnick's office have a chance to look at the agreement and approve it?
Yes, he did. And he had no problems with it.
And I'm just curious, because I know Dearborn has, you know, Dearborn's dispatch terminal is, is, it's a conglomerate of many. Uh, have any other cities joined in or do your knowledge gone away?
Yeah, I, I do believe there are negotiations with some other cities. It's quite a large facility. It's very impressive. Um, but I, I do know that they, they take care of all the Western Wayne communities and they do it darn.
Curious from, uh, how many cities, you can find out how many they actually support.
Well, I, they, 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 they definitely support Wayne, Westland, Garden City, Dearborn, and, and Inster. We share a channel with Inster. Um, and Westland shares a sc- channel with Garden City. Um, so, it just kind of enhances the teamwork of the community as well. Um, just we're all on the same page and we can provide mutual aid more smoothly.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes.
Yes, the cost is going up approximately, um, five thousand dollars a month. Um, so, i- it's going from a, approximately thirty-two thousand dollars to thirty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month.
And are there any defenders?
No.
Any other questions? Yeah, th- this is, I've, I've been at this facility a couple times and it's pretty phenomenal, what, what they have out there and the different cubes and how they run the whole thing. Um, and each, our two, what is it, we're with Inster, correct?
Yes.
So, there's, there's a cubicle just for us that, that comes on and then they, if there's a, something that's huge, then it goes to another thing, but it stays, it's, it's really amazing.
Impressive. Even if we were able to buy all the technology and hire people, we wouldn't be able to engage in the same type of professional dispatch they have.
Yeah.
They have so many folks working. They have, you know, dispatchers are specialties in this, dispatchers are specialties in that, and, uh, they, they can just do so much.
They can bring somebody in that's a certain type of a dispatcher, if, depending on what the emergency is, to help with something. Um, I know when I first got on council, we did our own dispatch.
Yes.
And, uh, I happened to be at the police station one time. And, and this is how antiquated our system was, is that somebody called in nine one one and because of how the cell phone towers align and everything, they would swap in. And so, we had a, a Westland call coming into Wayne and they had to basically call nine one one again, hoping to get the other tower. So, this is a much better system for the safety of our residents. And I, I applaud, you know, the Police Department for putting that together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Item eleven E, approval of budget amendment twenty twenty-four dash eight.
Move to approve Wass.
Support Quarles.
Any questions?
Eddie, could you explain what this is?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a budget amendment. Um, this is the final budget amendment of the fiscal year, since this is the last meeting of the fiscal. So, the last one we can get in. So, just any items where we see we might go over or be under, we're making those adjustments to keep us on budget. Any specific questions?
No, anything? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven F, approval of the amendment to the Hennessy Engineering Contract. This is previously approved May seventh, twenty twenty-four, to include the design and build for the Gaudi Park Amphitheater.
Move to approve?
Support Dowd.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve, administration reports.
Together like a five-page report for you guys, but I figured your meeting was long enough. So, I don't have anything big going on. So, uh, whatever we got, we'll put in your weekly report. I'm good. Thank you.
Public comments for matters not on the agenda. Public comment is conducted in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. Each public comment is limited to three minutes, which will begin when the speaker approaches the podium, unless modified by a majority vote of city council. Public comment shall not be disruptive nor contain any profanity, racial, ethnic, religious, sexual, or national origins, slurs, or overtones. Public comment shall not contain defaming or slanderous personal attacks. All public comments will be directed to city council and the city council will not respond during public comments. Any violation of public comment procedures shall constitute a breach of the peace. If a member of the public engages in such a breach of the peace, they may be ordered to be seated immediately or removed from the meeting by the chairperson of that meeting.
Okay, sir.
Hello again, uh, Steve Coats, uh, four five six zero Treadwell. Um, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council here, um, what many of your residents feel is, uh, kind of a breach of power from your ordinance officers in the city of Wayne. Um, a lot of them, and this is not the first time it's happened, they like to go around, around holidays and write anything up that they can on people, which limits the time since many residents are going out of town on these, uh, around these holidays, which limits their time to complete whatever task they happen to write them up for. I, for example, um, got one dated for June twenty-second, postmarked for June twenty-fourth. Twenty-second was a Wednesday, twenty-fourth was Friday. I didn't leave until Saturday evening and I never received it. Sunday, no mail. Monday, holiday. I was already gone by then. So, now I've already lost six of these possible days when they gave me ten days to complete these tasks. Uh, I don't know if that really makes sense to you guys or how, how little time they gave after it was all set and done. Um, but really, the main thing, uh, that I wanted to get up here and say is, uh, and this just happened earlier this week, and I have cameras on my home, so I have a video of it, um, that I find it highly, highly unprofessional that one of the ordinance officers circled around, left his vehicle, walked up my driveway, and confronted my teenage daughter getting out of her car. This is someone that you would not mistake for being a homeowner. There was no reason for him to do that. If there was any contact to be made, it should have been done in writing or to someone who would definitely be an owner of that home. And my daughter is of age. She is eighteen years of age, but in no way does she look like she would be a homeowner. Um, this is just something I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. I hope you guys all take this to heart. Anyone up here who would have kids, who would see a roughly sixty-year-old grown man walk up to your eighty-five-pound daughter. Um, I implore you all to please just take this into consideration. Maybe speak to your ordinance officers, um, about a better way of conduct with that. Um, thank you very much for your time.
And did you leave your information earlier?
I did not.
If you could give your information to the city manager, so she can look into it for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I went to the theater this, today to, uh, see the movies that I love the best. And I came out, as I went in at three ten, I noticed there was a lot of police activity around the housing that's right there by the theater. And when I came out at five, it was even greater. And I saw the blockage of people being able to get out. I had to go on the west side of the building to get out. And so, I knew the severity of what was happening before I even knew what was happening. And I want to say to the chief that I want to give my condolences to your team, um, as to why they were in that situation. And that is a rough situation to be in. Um, and for the person, whoever it was, um, that had to make that decision. It is very hard to do that, especially with all that was going on in that apartment. So, my condolences to your team.
Anyone else? You could have been in the report.
But then it would have been, then it would have been longer. So, uh, I can't resist. I, uh, summer is a super busy and fun-filled time at the library. As I mentioned last week, I'm going to be coming up here and, uh, telling you about the things coming up. The library is closed tomorrow and observance of Juneteenth. However, on Thursday, we have a children's program of Ming the Magnificent Magician for ages three and up and their caregivers. It should be, uh, magnificent. Next week, on the twenty-fifth, we have, and that's at two PM, if I didn't say that. Next week, also at two PM, on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, we have teen snack adventures. So, students entering grade six through twelve are invited to come to the library and try snack, a variety of snacks from countries around the world. And stick around for teen silent book club after that, which is like a book club with absolutely no pressure and no talking required. Uh, next week, Wednesday, we have our weekly, um, storytime for ages five and under, and also an adult program, um, called Cows at the Opera House and Other Museum Mysteries, put on by the Detroit Institute of Arts. Um, a volunteer will be talking about some of the museum's many mysteries, including issues of authenticity and, uh, other mysteries, uh, surrounding artwork in the DIA. Uh, this is a hybrid program, so you're welcome to join us on Zoom, or you can come to the library and we'll have it, uh, being presented there on Zoom as well. And finally, next week on Thursday, uh, another kids program, Rock Buddies, for ages five and up. You can make your own pet rock, uh, to take on all your adventures with you this summer. So, I hope to see you at summer, all of those, this week and next.
Thank you. Any, anyone else comments on, not on the agenda? Any other comments? Seeing none, please move the agenda.
Item thirteen is the consent calendar. There's three items under the consent calendar. The city of Wayne Downtown Development Authority, meet, meeting minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-four. The Wayne Planning Commission, meeting minutes of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the Wayne Commission on Aging, meeting minutes of May fourteenth.
Move to approve Wass.
Support, Quarles.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Comments from city council.
Councilman Clearman?
Tomorrow is Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Eve, or I'm sorry, Freedom Eve was January first, eighteen sixty-three. The first watch night services took place on that night. The African-Americans gathered in churches and private homes all across the country, waiting news of the emancipation proclamation to take in effect. At the stroke of midnight, prayers were answered as all enslaved peoples in the Confederate State were declared legally free. Union soldiers, many of whom were black, marched into plantations across cities in the south, reading small copies of the Emancipation Proclamation, spreading the news of freedom in Confederate States, only through the Thirteenth Amendment and emancipation and slavery throughout the United States. Unfortunately, not everyone in Confederate territory would immediately be free. Then the Emancipation Proclamation was made effective in eighteen sixty-three, not being implemented in places still under Confederate control. As a result, in the westernmost Confederate state of Texas, enslaved people would not be free until much later. Freedom finally came on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when some two thousand Union troops arrived in Galveston Bay, Texas. The army announced that with more than two hundred fifty thousand enslaved black people in the state were free by executive decree. This state became, or came to be known as Juneteenth by the newly freed people in Texas. The post-emancipation period, known as Reconstruction, eighteen sixty-five through eighteen seventy-seven, marked an era of great hope, uncertainty, and struggle for the nation as a whole. Four million enslaved people immediately sought to reunify families, establish schools, run political office, push radical legislation, and even sue slaveholders for compensation. Given the two hundred-plus years of enslavement, such changes were nothing short of amazing. Not even generation of slavery, African-Americans were inspired and empowered to transfer their lives to the country. Juneteenth marks their country's second Independence Day. Although it was long, celebrated in African-American community, this monumental event remains largely unknown to most Americans. The historical legacy of Juneteenth shows the value of never giving up hope in certain times. Although we're not celebrating in Wayne, a couple of nearby places are. Angster has a peace walk tomorrow at twelve noon through one thirty P M., or one thirty P M. They'll be leaving the old city hall at twenty-one twenty-one Angster Road, walking to the Easter Park on John Daly. There are fun games, live entertainment, free food for your kids. Westland, actually Wayne County. Saturday will be Juneteenth there, it's a day. It'll be friends, family, day in the park, free music, food, games, Black History, inflatables, crafts, and much more. And that's Saturday, noon through four, at Nankin Mills Park. And remember, tomorrow is a federal holiday, so no mail. That's it for me.
You councilman, Maholland?
The only thing I had on my list was also to remember tomorrow as a celebration of Juneteenth and all that that means to the freedom of those people affected by that. And to stay cool, remember to check on your elderly neighbors and don't forget your furry friends outside, it's very hot out. Don't leave your dogs and your cats out and make sure you track on each other. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Just wanted to bring up that Wayne has a couple of firework events coming up in the next few weeks. On June thirtieth, Crosspoint has fireworks and that starts at dusk, but they have games and stuff before that. And July fifth, Hillcrush Church also is doing a fireworks event. So if you wanted to take your kiddo someplace to see fireworks, you don't have to go far. That'll pass.
Councilman Quarles?
Thank you, Mayor. Few things today. Our prayers and thoughts should be going out not only to our officers that were dealing with what they were dealing with at the apartment over there. It's very sad when a fellow officer has to pull his gun and take somebody's life. We don't take that lightly. So your prayers and thoughts to them. And also, let's remember the Rochester Splash Pad. This gentleman went in and just twenty-eight shots and just was shooting randomly. Nobody knows why. Remember the families. There's a lot of, a lot of hurt there, you know, not only for them, but the effects of that. I also want to tell everybody on, that are watching, a lot of stuff was said about streetlights tonight. And I don't know if you all know this, but if you, and this, I had to do this, so this may, you may know this and you may not, but if a streetlight is out, or it is light or dim, you go to D T E, you get on their website, and there is a spot on their website for streetlights. You'll go in there, you'll click on the streetlights, and when you get on there, there, go to the pole where the streetlight is, there should be a number on that pole. You'll report that in D T E's webpage, you'll put that pole number in there, and there's an explanation on why the light is out. So once you do that, it's going to take a couple of weeks. I've already reported the one across my street on Howe Road. They just put on a nine-thousand-foot pole across the street and put our light on there and it's out. They didn't even hook it up. So it's been out for almost three weeks, but I reported it on the website. So if you have a streetlight that is out, it's dim, it's not working, please go to D T E's website. There is a spot on there for you to report that. And lastly, over at Moon Mystic, I am DJing the Mystical Midsummer Festival twenty twenty four from twelve to eight on June twenty-ninth, which is Saturday. They're going to have food trucks, hourly giveaways, mystical experiences, and it's just going to be a lot of fun. Tiffany over at Moon Mystic has put together a good vendor show. There's going to be vendors there and I'm going to be DJing it. So come on out, listen to some good music and my ghost team will be there, my paranormal team will be there, and it's just going to be a lot of fun. And with that, I'll pass.
Councilman Dowd?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, in my experience of being on council, the best-attended city council meetings is always the renewal of the elect, the streetlight assessment. I agree, the language is very vague, it, you know, but this is what the city has to work with and this is the process. We have to have a hearing, we have a follow-up hearing after that. It's all open to the public to, to, to address their concerns, questions, and a lot of people don't even know that they, you know, the average person whose taxes are bundled into their mortgage, they don't look at the line items. It's not until you get to that sage-old year, age where you actually just have your tax bill and you're itemizing it, you, you are amazed how much school district takes away from all residents, no matter what age. And I usually, I, I, I will still continue to recap my bill here twice a year on how much the city actually gets, which is, I think, about a third from compared to the, all the other line items that are bundled into our, our taxes and bills. It's not an easy thing to process and digest, but it's a necessity. You know, there was a time where we were talking about turning off, there was conversation about turning off the lights and you really don't understand what that means until you have the light, well, till your power's out and you're driving down all your side roads and you realize you may not have the lighting you want, but it is better than nothing. And this is not a line item, that's a profit line. This is a pass-through expense, you know, from our vendor. But on the other side of that, I'm going to flip to some other topics. I, a lot of things are going on in the city, which is fantastic. June, we're here, we are in June and we're one meeting away, you know, we're coming up to the car cruise. It's amazing where, you know, how fast things move along and I have no doubt that this cruise is probably going to be our most attended, knock on wood if the weather, if the weather permits. Also behind that, I know that we are, still have, the Downtown Development Authority still sponsoring the food trucks in June, which it looks like it goes three weeks into June for sure, as posted, and also the concerts in the park behind that. So a lot of opportunity to come together as peers and residents and folks in the city. I think it is one of the things that we're very lucky with. We're, we're an extremely small city surrounded by a lot of large cities that do a lot of things, would like to do some of the things that we do. And we're still lucky to be able to do that, but that'll pass.
Mayor Proton?
Bluey is coming back to town on July thirteenth during the cruise. Bluey will be here at Flowers in the Mitten at three four eight five two Michigan Avenue. Stop by and say hello to Bluey. Also, the city of Wayne parks trails in green, space cleanup heroes will be holding its first official meeting later this summer, stay tuned. And again, Bluey is looking forward to seeing everyone on July thirteenth at Flowers in the Mitten and she's very excited to see us again. Thank you.
Thanks. Glad you were able to contact Bluey. Okay. Couple things tonight. First, if there's anybody interested, this is in the city of Livonia where they had the tornado touchdown and a family lost their little two-year-old daughter. But Rotary Park in Livonia was decimated and there is a cleanup over there, so if there's people that like to do that kind of thing. Livonia on Saturday, during the day, will have a cleanup at their Rotary Park. I know that it was mentioned at our Rotary Club today and, and I know that a lot of communities around us are coming in to try to help and support the city of Livonia, deal with the tragedy and trying to clean up their city. So if you're interested, there's an opportunity to help your neighbor. And also wanted to thank the, you know, the D D A. I think it's, it's pretty noticeable that seeing the, the daylilies and mulch and the, all around the downtown and trying to clean up the downtown and also on Wayne Road, trying to take, just trying to beautify some things. And now that we're past the, having the issues with what we owed Ford from the tax tribunal stuff, now we have that money back and we're able to reinvest in the downtown a little bit more. And I feel it's really great the D D A is able to try to start having that happen and I think it's noticeable and I've had people already talked and say, say to me how they're noticing some of those changes. So I think that's a great, a great start as we continue to just, continue to try to make our city better. I also wanted to wish Ellen Bogenschutz a happy birthday. Actually, I already got to do this on Friday. He turned a hundred. And he came to the United States at the age of two from Cambridge, Germany, and he grew up during the Depression. He first lived on a farm, which is now Canton, and then moved to Westland and then in Wayne and lived in Wayne most of their, their life till recently. He was a German national and he was barred from serving in the war and instead participated in the war effort, effort through his carpentry work. He helped build the Norway Defense Worker Housing Complex in Westland and became a citizen at the age of twenty-one. He married his wife of seventy-eight years, Emma, and together they built their house in a short ten years. He eventually retired from the Ford Wicksen Plan in eighty-seven and due to some health issues, he moved out of our city at ninety-nine, ninety-eight or ninety-nine into an assisted living facility and got to, and I met him before because it was through his wife and she's still around and she's ninety-eight years old, so hopefully we'll be celebrating a hundredth birthday in a couple of years and she was a Rosie the Riveter. So that was just, it was pretty, pretty neat. They had a really nice party for him over the weekend and myself and Mayor Coleman attended that and got to wish him a happy birthday. So just want to wish, actually I said the name wrong, it's Henry Timmerman. I'm sorry, it's not Ellen, it's his son. I was, was reading my email, it's Henry Timmerman is the person that, that had the hundredth birthday. So apologize for that. A long night, so. With that, can I get a, a motion? No? I know for going to a closed session.
I have to read it.
Oh, okay.
So motioned?
You want to read it first?
I have to read it and we're going to make a motion.
I'm just trying to save you some time.
There's a process. Item fourteen, closed session, fourteen A, approval to enter into closed session to discuss pending litigation with legal counsel in the cases of Miller versus Wayne, Wayne versus Miller pursuant to M C L fifteen point two six eight one E. Now?
So motioned?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Brock?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foss?
Yes.
Councilman Clearman?
Yes.
Councilman Maholland?
Yes.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, it is ten oh two and we're going into closed session.
It's eleven oh two. Can I get a motion to close the closed session?
Motion to close the closed session.
Uh, support. Brock.
Mayor Proton Brock.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass.
Oh yeah.
Yes.
Councilman Clermont. Councilman Mahullen. Councilman Quarles.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So motioned.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.